Wait.
Yeah, just wait.
This morning really funny.
Rest for you.
Yeah, for real, right? Stop it, I don't want to talk to me. Don't start thinking.
One time we have to have like as the background with the beat of like an amazing starting.
These city schools, how are you?
Is Brian on there? Is Brian still on there? All this meeting in order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the bond for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and endless.
Alright, I think Brian is with us. Kathy Scott, Kyra, Carrie and myself are here in person. And Sonya is absent tonight. Still don't see him. Um, are there any corrections to the minutes? Saying head shake, no, no corrections to the minutes? Is there any public comment tonight on non-agenda items? Eight left, so seeing none. Alright, moving on. Reports and introductions.
Jason Weber, Superintendent. I wanna talk just briefly, we had Sean Deeseck and Jennifer Schmitz come from ACSA to work with the, some of the leadership team on the leadership paradigm. And it's kind of a language to work with staff and to communicate. And just as a good opportunity to work together as a team. But the, those eight sessions, and so we're gonna work on that throughout the year. And right now, there's work to turn that into, for administrators, to turn that into a evaluation tool, so. Kind of saw it as an opportunity to kind of start work on that on the front end, rather than, you know, once it's already coming at us. So there's just a handful of school districts in the state working on it, I think Sitka, Bering Straits, and cannot remember the other one, Fairbanks was the first one last year that started doing it, so. It, we got a good idea, it's good. It was, it was a good start for us, and I think it was good work, just a good way to come back from summer. Then, next thing I wanna talk about is the district office move to HHESS. Orion is the contractor that started moving very fast. And to save the city money in the project, kind of to make sure everything got done the way it's up to our standards. We originally had talked about doing it in two phases, and then kind of moving the office, elementary office, as each phase was completed. What we found is that it was easier, more cost-effective for them to move the elementary office and create temporary office down on the kindergarten end, and so they, we took that double classroom with the windows facing the playground, and they were able to make four offices in there. And then even have room for circulation counter and everything, it's, it's actually a very big space back in there, all the offices are at least ten by ten. So they're, they're significant size, they noise-proofed each one of them, so that you can have private conversations in there, so that's enough for all of the elementary's needs in there temporarily. The front office door will then be the playground entrance door, because they'll shut off the doors going towards, that are currently the front entrance by the racquetball court there. Those will be shut down until the project's complete. Plan is to complete the project in December, and so we'll with Orion, I mean, those guys are just on it, I mean. Yeah, originally we were thinking, you know, we, I asked that they add the dry, second driveway entrance, so the parking lot now has, and had two entrances and two exits. Like, oh, maybe we could get that in like October, November, there, they've already got it cut in, they're gonna have concrete guy here next week to start getting that set up, so. That should help with traffic flow and safety issues, it's, we've had a number of safety issues over the years in that parking lot, so. It's another benefit of the project, that we're able to get that to happen sooner, rather than later, so. Yeah.
So two entrances and exits, is it one entrance and one exit?
Sorry, yeah, one, the idea is, is have the entrance where, where the current entrance is now, and then the exit would be the other. Yep, nice use through there, so there'd be traffic flow, so, yeah, thanks for clarification. And so there, but Kathy?
So how does the public get to the gym now? During this project, do they go around on the, the mid, admin building side, or how, how do they do that?
The, the current plan is, we haven't changed, it'll go, they'll have to go directly into the gym. And so the door's there. Those locker rooms that they're normally used for gym activities and after hours, we're gonna have a couple of porta-potties outside, so that they're more adjacent to where the, they need it to be, rather than having to go down to fourth and fifth grade commons to use restrooms. Especially since, I mean, it's used by a variety of different groups, it's not just like basketball, and so. We talked about just shutting it down a little bit for after hours, but then we started looking at little basketball kids, they, the elementary kids, they start in like late September, so we can't do that either, so. So, it's a temporary thing, and as soon as we can get them open, the contractors know that we'd like to get those open as soon as we can, but considering where they're doing the demo work and stuff like that, it, it was just easier to just shut it all down until they can get it done. So, the whole office area and then that hallway will just be shut down, and that'll give them space, they've got a door to get all their stuff in and out. And the project stays nice and confined that way. They've already put up the metal fences, so the public will know already just by pulling up, and they've got signs that should be here very soon, that will direct people to the new entrance, that'll be on the side of the building to make everything very obvious. Right, cellphone-free schools, PSA's Megan has been a rock star in getting these communications out to the public and very thorough. We will send another one out before school starts as well. We've worked as administrators to ensure that, you know, the, the building policies match obviously with the board policies, but in a way that, you know, if, if a kid gets in trouble for it, that, that it's consistent and, and similar between the three buildings, so. Handbooks have been updated to, to match those as well, so. So far, I honestly, I really thought I was gonna get a lot of emails after that sent out. I got three thank yous. So, lots of response I was thinking, but I'll take it, and so. So I'm guessing as we, you know, the policy starts to be enacted, we'll probably get a little bit more pushback, but I thought that was encouraging. The timing was really good, a number of other large school districts had put their, put, put their stuff out on social media the week prior, you know, including the big school districts across the state, so. We're not alone in the policy, it's very similar to other school districts, and the timing of communications is very similar. And just thank Dan and Megan on the work they did on the RFP, you guys saw already. Jim Nygaard, he's in town, I can bring him back to Anchorage tomorrow. But I just wanted to say thank you for you guys setting that up, you know, I'm coming, I was just finishing my, my walk right before the meeting today, and I was just kind of reminiscing back, I was like, it was like one year ago today, I think I was meeting with Carrie in the superintendent's office, asking if I could fill in for a little bit. And so, it's been really nice since we, you guys brought Jim on to work with me, and I know he's worked with you guys as well. And so I just wanna thank, thank you for giving me that time to work with him. And I'll continue to work with him and become friends in the future, so, I appreciate that. This week.
Is he still on contract for longer?
He is, he talked to me a little bit about, he's kind of getting, he's feeling good about a lot of stuff, and so he's like, well, I could just kind of be done now, I said, now as soon as I say you're done, then I'm, I'm gonna need you. And so I'll keep you on retainer for a little bit longer, so I'll still be calling him for a while, every Monday, every Monday morning, that's what I'm, I'm doing at seven AM, so, on six thirty normally, but Jim's an early bird. The admin team will be working on our crisis management plan, I've reached out to folks at City, Scott, we got Aaron Basic gonna come over, kinda get us jump-started a little bit, it's not gonna be, we can't do it as a one and done. It's not that we don't have crisis management pieces, we don't have this, kind of everything kind of tied together. So kind of the goal will be to kind of look for gaps, and then there's been a lot of work done with the communications plan, which I know we're not hundred percent completed with, but they, they, they touch each other, but they're not the same thing. They're, they're two different pieces, we have a, I'd say a really nice flipbook for classrooms and stuff like that, but if, if that's all our communications, our, our crisis management plan was, we got something. But we don't necessarily have the document that we should really have as a district, so. We'll work on that, and I think it'll be a good exercise for us all to kind of think through all of the what-ifs that may come up. The other big piece that the administration will be working on, as well as you guys and the, and the teachers and staff and parents and students, Cognia, we're, we're getting to that mid-cycle phase in school accreditation, so. We'll have more work to do, we'll keep it as light as we can, but you know, we're in the middle of that, and the work we do now makes, you know, the work we do in two years that much easier, a lot of that information will be stored, so. Expect to kind of hear back, kind of on school accreditation, and kind of how we're doing, keep our schools accredited. And as usual, HHESS and GMS were randomly selected by NAEP to test our kids again. Every other year, we get selected randomly, so. Well, we know how to do it, we know how to work with them, so that's all the same. AK Star Test, the information was released to the superintendents, and then they told us, don't, don't send anything out, because we just wanna adjust the, something or another some scores, I'm sure they weren't happy with. And so, that information, as soon as we're allowed to release it, we'll get it out to the public and parents as soon as we can, but I would expect that in the next few weeks to come out. I just sent out, everyone should have gotten kind of a draft to burn service plan, right now, that's where we're at, you know, might be some adjustments, but for the most part, we got kind of things ready to go, so, you haven't checked your email, you can see it there. Another piece I put on here, we haven't had a rifle team affiliated with the high school in a couple of years now. Currently have no one signed up, we don't have a coach or anything signed up for it either. The only reason I bring it up is just kind of a food for thought, is, are we using that space up there, would it be better, for instance, used as a weight room, or get more kids up there using the space, heat it, we take care of it, but I don't know, my question really is kind of to, start kind of thinking about, you know, are we using it the way we, we want to, is that something we're gonna be able to revive? As we start kind of looking through for a high school remodel, I think at some point it's a conversation we should have, I don't know that, I'm not asking for anybody even to make a decision on anything, but I wanna bring it up so that we're just kind of talking about spaces, so. Maybe there's some other idea or things out there that you guys have, or people in the public have, but it is a tremendously large space and can be used for other things if, if we're not gonna fill it with a rifle team. The governor got his veto override, so I felt really good about that, and so, I do thank everybody for their advocacy, I know that it doesn't happen because of one voice, it happens because people across the state spoke up, both here in Valdez and across the state as well, so. That provides us with some opportunities to start planning for next year, and, and obviously puts us on some financial footing for this school year. I'll be working with Amber this week, I'm just kind of looking at, kind of what do we have now for funding, how does that change our, our situation this school year? But also, I've already, we've already kind of just talked about, let's start looking at next year, so if, if there is funds available this year, we're not hamstringing ourselves for the next school year, and creating a situation that causes us to have to let somebody go unexpectedly, that's not healthy. By changing the BSA, it allows us to look a little bit further out with some certainty, we have an idea, we, we're gonna know what our, our increases for labor are gonna be, and that's a big piece of it. We also can get pretty close on what the insurance costs are gonna be. And so we can get, we can dial it in, I think, with pretty good certainty, so I'll work with Amber and, and we'll get that information to you guys here soon, so that we can kind of talk with the knowledge behind that effect going forward, but I can guarantee it puts us on good financial footing. The other thing, we're still kind of eyeballing out there, is what deed's gonna do, or what the state school board's gonna do with deed's proposed, right, uh, local contribution regulations, so we'll be monitoring that. You know, you wanna pick my brain at any time, feel free to grab me and talk about it, because it's very interesting to me, because it has a huge potential impact on our schools, especially in the area of food service, student activities, as well as whatever they do with the word in-kind, that, that's, that one, one word change in there really could have a, a significant impact on us, I do know that. When you look at a community like Valdez, which has a very strong relationship with the city, a very healthy relationship, it has the potential to, you know, hinder our, our relationship, because you gotta keep track of every little thing over here on a spreadsheet, and they, that can be deducted from what they're allowed to give, because they, the city has always wanted to give. There are other school districts out there that do not have a healthy relationship, that are just like us in municipal school districts, and their boroughs would be happy to not give, and that gives them a reason not to give. And I think that's causing some ponderance by the state right now. What that language could look like.
So, you know, hopefully everybody commented to DED, is there, now should we start commenting to the state school board, or what could we be doing in the meantime to make sure that, that somebody listens?
Yeah, if you know anybody in the state school board, communicate with them and, and let them know your feelings. In October eighth currently is when it's set up, if, if that date or time changes, I'll let people know, there's a, the state school board will be looking at it at that, on that date. You know, just, you guys are a school board, you, you have things that come before you that may be controversial, and you may look at them and they might decide to move it to a working group, they can do a lot of different things, they could also vote it up or down, and our biggest worry right now is they vote for it and, and move it, move it forward. I think that advocating, and I think showing up at that school, state school board meeting, it's a virtual meeting, and saying your feelings about it go a long way. I know that the people that showed up from Valdez, there are seven people who spoke when it was the emergency regulation came before the board. Their advocacy, I think helped cause the state school board to pause and, and wait, and so I think it does make a big difference. And so, I encourage anybody who's got some free time that day to call in, and I'll, I'll talk to make sure the city knows as well, I'll remind them, and they had a number of city council members, and city manager was there too.
So we probably could get a list of who's on the state school board and start writing them letters in the meantime?
Yep. And I think that, well, the other good news is the federal government released their, the federal funding, that was a, a positive, so. A nightmare scenarios there have evaporated for this school year. Thank you.
Next up, one of two amazing titles, instruction and assessment, John Berkeley. Hello, John Berkeley, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. So all our science books and science materials that we had ordered at the end of the adoption cycle have arrived on site. I'll be working with the maintenance department to get those out to the buildings, in addition to the science, the math, and the reading books, and everything else has arrived as well, so we'll clear up some space in the shipping and receiving area, and clear out the hallways of all the stacked boxes, lots of good stuff coming into the district. Curriculum committee, committees are being planned for this coming school year. We don't look to make any major purchases for any of the core areas or content areas. If we look at what's been recently purchased, we have our core areas, math, reading, if you look at social studies has recently purchased new programs. If we were to follow what the chart says in the policy for what we would adopt next, that would be world languages, but we have a new Spanish teacher, and I believe we have a fairly new Spanish program, Wayside Publishing, and so I don't recommend looking at any new purchases for that, but rather to begin forming curriculum committees to actually review and revise our district curriculum. I'm not sure how many of you remember Melissa Reese and the work that she had done, the last committee to, to meet and to update the curriculum was the English Language Arts Committee, and last year, Megan was able to go into however, Google stores all the archived folders and accounts, she was able to pull up all the previous latest and greatest curriculum documents for Valdez City Schools. So the focus this year will be to look at those documents, determine if there's enough information on those documents, and begin revising and updating. And I can speak a little more to the process as we get closer to getting those committees going. I've also attached the policy, the accompanying AR, that breaks it down in detail on how the process should go. I'm sure you noted that there is a community curriculum committee in which names, your people are recruited, stakeholders are recruited to be a part of a curriculum review, and the board is tasked with selecting those people or approving them to be on the committee, so. As I said in my notes, I'm looking to follow this as closely as I can. And I, I think this is a long time coming. This process is going to replace chalk as an admin team, we had met and went through training with the, it's now known as curriculum and instruction through Power School. And it was pretty much unanimous that chalk was not the tool that we were looking for in. We weren't really comfortable with the products it was producing, and how the process that was used to go through and enter all the information. Whereas this curriculum process is straight to the point, it updates the district curriculum, and it goes through a vetting process that will be posted, ultimately have our curriculum posted on our website for anyone to review. Which is the norm. Let's see, accreditation, Mr. Weber had alluded to accreditation. If you remember, accreditation is a process in which schools and/or districts are measured against a set criteria or standards by a vetted company or organization. And there are benefits to having an accredited district or an accredited school, normally it's an accredited high school is what you want. It works out well for students who are going into post-secondary, such as four-year college, helps with scholarships and financial aid. But the previous renewal, it was decided that the whole district would become accredited. And so, 2027 is when that accreditation is up for renewal, and so we are mid-cycle, that means we take a look at the report and the data that was produced from the accreditation review team, and we start to plan out next steps, and so we'll actually begin that process Wednesday morning at an admin meeting. It's a pretty in-depth process, there's a lot of information to go through. Not all, I would say most of it is, is very familiar to our admin team. It's nice to be able to have information to look at as a team that gets us all on the same page, and gets everybody understanding what we should be doing as a district, as it pertains to student learning, or district leadership, or, you know, how we utilize our resources. And state, any questions so far? State testing data, the reports are out, but they are not available for distribution. Every five years, NWEA releases a normative study. Every five years, N W E A uh, releases a normative study in which they look at kids on a national scale to determine essentially what, what RIT scores kids should be scoring at any time of the school year. So for example, in this new chart, this two thousand twenty-five normative chart, what would a national fiftieth percentile third grader score in reading in the fall? What would that same student score in the winter? What would that same student score in the spring? Um, and they do that for each of the grade levels, for each of the testing periods in reading, uh, math and language usage. So every five years they come out with this chart. N W E A is also our state vendor for state testing. So I don't know what happened. I don't know if it was an oversight or if the timelines between when this normative study was released and when we actually were able to access the state reports. Um, if that was off, but they asked us to hold off so they could go through and apply the new N W E A written norms for each of the grade levels. Uh, and so these, these reports will have the most updated normative data applied to it. Uh, they did give back to us with the date, uh, August eighteenth. We'll be able to release it to uh, the principals and the buildings. And they can begin printing, putting them in uh, student files. Uh, sending out to parents, uh, either digitally or through, through mail. Uh, however, I guess would be probably through email. Much the same way as the report cards have gone out. Um, let's see, any questions? White bunch tonight. It's like Easter Island. That's what I tell my staff. Just like Easter Island, you just look at me like those statues. So reimbursements for pre-approved college courses have been coming in over the summer. So it's nice that staff have been completing the courses that they um, have applied for reimbursement, reimbursement for. Uh, and so that's a, that's a really positive thing. It's a good initiative that the district has started. Uh, which probably saved tens of thousands of dollars for our staff who are looking to either add uh, an endorsement to their certificate or working towards a higher degree like a master's degree or a doctorate. Um, and so those have been coming in pretty steady and staff um, have been doing a really good job of taking advantage of that initiative. Um, and three-day in-service uh, next week, actually four days with the new hires. Uh, I believe we have seven new hires, half members. Well, new to position, we do have a number of staff that have been in district for at least a year. Uh, and so we have a lot of uh, familiar faces. As they took advantage of that college tuition reimbursement have been finishing up programs and actually moving into certified positions, uh, just good all around. And so we'll have a number of people beginning Tuesday with the entire district returning Wednesday, the twentieth. For three days of in-service on a myriad of topics, new science, continuing math. Uh, district initiatives and, and communications that normally will go on the fall. Are there any questions?
You're very thorough. Thank you, John.
Great, thank you.
All right, next up, Director of Facilities, Dan Bryant.
Good evening, Dan Bryant, Director of Facilities. Uh, it's been a busy summer. Obviously Jason talked about H H S, the construction starting for the new office and district office. We're having a pretty significant issue with the air handler, number one, uh, the main circuit breaker. Uh, is out, the part arrived today. We're gonna put it in tomorrow and hope we'll have that guy back up and going. Couple of water leaks, uh, we had freezer problems that came on as soon as the freezers were empty. At the end of the school year, one lost refrigerant and the other one was a part that needed to be replaced. So had the contractor come out, recharge refrigerant and get all those back up and going. We sent all the vehicles over to get PM'd and uh, safety checks done, alignments. And right now, currently, we don't have any broke windshields, so. Preventative maintenance was done on our older Volvo, found a leaking hydraulic line that's been fixed. Uh, we did receive, I don't think I told you guys, we did receive our new Volvo. In, I think it was June fourth. Uh, we had a really good facilities training week where we went over all our requirements, uh, bloodborne pathogen. Has come and all those good things. Uh, school's been being deep cleaned, all the gyms have been refinished, the floors. Lot of preventative maintenance was done. The city switched to a new work order system and we're, we're switching with them. So the old one will be phased out and it'd be a lot easier for us to pull data and share data. Uh, like to celebrate my team, they've been busting their tail all summer, even with uh, people being on leave and a lot of nice weather. And also like to thank the school board for all the approvals and letting us get the stuff we need to do our job. Uh, some of the stuff that was very evident was the carpet cleaners, the new ones we got. When I was walking into the schools like uh, G M S, you could see the difference in the color of the floor and stains that were there were gone now from just being able to have some new equipment. So thank you all very much. That's from my team as well. Questions?
We didn't have any leaks in the roof last night, did we?
No current ones. We, Patrick did find one in the corner of the gym at the high school.
Okay, hospital flooded pretty bad.
Yeah, we, we sent some equipment over to help him out, so. Thank you.
See you now, thank you, Dan. Right, next up, Director of Business, Amber Colley.
Um, I should have had a short report today, so I apologize because I do have several things on here. The audit happened July seventh to the tenth, uh, the three of them were here for four days. There were no issues and everything turned out great. I have to thank Cheryl Fleming because she makes us successful. The final pers and turs numbers came in last week. And uh, so I've sent the adjusting journal entry out for, uh, out to the auditors. And I would expect a draft um, sometime probably next week. Uh, my meeting reminder, the meal prices are increasing by a dollar. The elementary will be three fifty, the G M S and V H S will be four twenty-five and all breakfasts will be two fifty. Adult meal will cost the actual price of the meal. Um, reminder to parents listening, fill out your free and reduced application if you think you even might be eligible. It actually helps us in so many places, having a higher free and reduced. We use it on our E-rate funding, we use it on grants, so many places it comes in handy. Uh, parents also receive a discounted activity fee amount, which with whatever the legislature is going to end up doing or the state school board, that may make a big difference to parents when activities plays out. Um, the new uh, certified contract for twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight this current school year and the next two. The teacher's contract went to, contract day went to a seven and a half hour day. That seems easy for scheduling, but it changes absolutely everything in payroll and leave. And I, I emailed all the teachers and gave them their current, the updated amounts. And I have heard from one of them thanking me. Maybe they're not, maybe they're not checking their emails. So I'm assuming no news is good news. Um, and as Jason talked about, um, there was a override to the governor's veto. Um, I'm not sure what side of that you're on, but I can tell you neither the representative or the senator for Valdez was on the correct side of that. And the overall increase depending on our uh, count will be just over nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars for next year. Um, as Jason said, he and I are going to work on a two-year plan and then we'll be bringing that back to the board. For input.
Questions? Kathy?
Is the nine hundred and fifty thousand, that's the whole B S A increase or that's the, the part that got unvetoned?
That is the entire amount. The part that got unvetoned was like two hundred and eighty thousand approximately, but yeah.
All right, thank you. Right, and with the second longest title, Director of Special Education and Federal Programs, Riley Ombi.
Riley Ombi, Director of Special Education and Federal Programs. Uh, yeah, my report's short and sweet. I think the biggest is that the money got allocated for federal programs. So I'm working in the G M S to get those final revisions done. Um, it is slightly less than what they initially had put in there in May, uh, but more than zero. Uh, my staff have been trickling back into the office. Both my admin assistants for federal programs and special education are back in the office. And then my special ed teachers at the middle school and high school are on campus this week doing extended school year for our sixth through twelfth grade students whose I U Ps indicate that service. Our elementary students received those services in June when Herman Hutchins did their um, summer reading program. And my challenge is always staffing. But uh, I've had some candid conversations with Jason and with Krista. And I'm, I'm optimistic that we'll make the best of, of what we're working with. And I believe it got slid into the P A R for tonight. Um, we did hire somebody for the lead interventionist. It's somebody who's been a pair with us for a couple of years, has been working on her own higher ed. And so I'm, I'm really thankful that we've got a solid team to um, help meet that need in the fourth and fifth grade this year. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Thank you. And last, Director of Technology, Megan Guinness.
My report is long, but I'll just assume you read it and cover the highlights. Um, working on communication, really ramping that up, we've talked about that a lot. Um, but I'm really proud of the way we're going and I, I feel like we are, we've yet to hit our stride. So I, I feel good about that. Um, this is a busy time of year for technology department, getting all, everybody, all the employees' devices ready. Getting all the student devices ready. Our goal is always to have every, every device ready for the day that that person comes on campus. So the first day teachers are back and they're ready for them now. Some of them are trickling in to get their computers a little bit early, which is totally fine. And um, the students, our goal is always their first day of school, so we are on track to hit that target. Um, our office locations are, have moved as a result of some internal restructuring and a result of just different other office movements that are happening. And so that leaves um, desktop support, Mike Rios will be housed at V H S. And um, we are now in the former library conference room. Uh, when we started thinking about what kids need and where kids need us, that was kind of the most commonly accessed place for kids. Um, it's just the right amount of footprint space, not too big. We didn't need an entire classroom. It was just kind of like our Goldilocks space. So we'll be working on other ways. Once school launches, we'll, we'll try and find a place where we can still do the occasional conference that that building might need without um, negatively impacting our takeover of that space. Um, but we worked with Peter a little bit and, and trying to find something that worked for everyone. Um, people have already found him there and are working with him, so that seems to be, that will be positive. That leaves me at the across town site. I'll be really primary for H H S. Obviously, once the district office moves into H H S, I'm right there, um, right where I need to be for helping kids. Um, in the interim, I'll be spending parts of each day walking over and helping kids with iPads and that sort of thing. Not to say Mike won't also head across town to the elementary school. We'll be here, there and everywhere supporting. Um, but those will be our primary living spaces, so to speak. CIRC will be in town uh, this coming week. They're scheduled, we have two CIRC members to come, um, the fourteenth through the eighteenth. Um, Colin will be back, he's already been here and then he'll be bringing Elric with him who's based out of Anchorage to get to know the site since he's a little bit uh, quicker of a jump for us. Planes don't fly or something, uh, Colin is based out of Juneau. Um, so their primary tasks when they're here are um, navigating and, and configuring that upgrade. Um, Copper Valley, our new contract has us upgraded uh, to a forty gig pipe, which is going to, we already have fast internet, this is gonna be screaming, um, so good advances to be done there. I'm glad to have CIRC in our pocket to really help us do that transition right. That'll be their primary task and then also the H H S front office move, making sure that those phones are ready to go. In a, in what is formerly a classroom, so. Those will be their primary tasks and they'll fit in other things as they find time. And then I'll be presenting a couple of different things at in-service. Um, we it was a small amount of money in the grand scheme of things, um, a couple of thousand and we got a ton of extra Google upgrades and features. And when we made the decision, of a long conversation over the span of several different instances about whether we were gonna keep chalk or not. I don't know how many people were actually in that space, but some people were lesson planning in that space. And even the ones who weren't, were kind of in this weird area where they didn't have a tool that they really loved. So I tried to focus in, away from the one more thing that just oversaturates teachers and my staff with having to learn one new product, one new space that we have to be in. And I did some reflecting about the spaces we're already in and how we could make those better for the teachers and the staff members with a, just a small amount of money. There are cost savings, certainly when you um, decide to discontinue a product like chalk, it was a very expensive product. Um, so we put just a, a small portion of what we used to spend on that into a space that we're already in, in Google. Um, the upgrades for teachers are, are going to feel very familiar. They're certainly six through twelve lives in Google Classroom a lot. They're going to get some incredible upgrades that I think will really positively impact them. I think they're gonna be excited about them. Um, things like automatic rostering of the Google Classroom, they don't have to hand make their classes anymore, just feeds from Power School. If they put in grades into Google Classroom, it's going to feed automatically into the gradebook if they so choose. Or if they don't choose, maybe it was just a formative thing. They don't have to elect that to go to the gradebook. A lot of different efficiencies like that that I think are going to be more impactful in that space. If they do spend a lot of time lesson planning in Google, they're gonna have a lot more features and not have to learn a whole new program. It's just a few new features in a space they're already in. So I'm excited to roll that out to the teachers and show them. In line with that is our A I initiative. Uh, after the board revamped the A I policy, really the academic dishonesty policy. We did some reflecting on how can we, how can we get some information from teachers? Um, I, I don't wanna be making any decision on whether or not in, in a silo, whether or not we have a specific tool and is it the right tool for us, because I'm not in the classroom actively teaching kids every single day. Um, and likewise, there are other tasks that administrators and that admin assistants do that aren't the same as teachers. And they may require a different product entirely if we choose to purchase an A I product. And so Jason and I did a lot of talking about um, what it would look like to spin up a committee, really a pilot, two concurrent pilots. One focused on what teachers and students need and one focused on what operations support positions need. Um, after doing a quick survey, Gemini is, is kind of releasing a lot of new features at the same time we are having these discussions. Gemini is not the only A I product out there by any means, but it is one of the few who protects student privacy and have committed in the education workspace to safeguarding sensitive data in a way that OpenAI, Chat G P T would never. Um, they use data to train their large language models, so they're never gonna do that. Um, so the idea is, um, this will, I'll talk to the teachers about this in the coming week. But the idea is that we find um, through asking for, for participation around twelve teachers from a variety of different grade levels, subject areas, buildings, uh, to get a broad expanse. People who are already naturally inclined and interested and wanna learn more to try out an advanced version of Gemini and see if it's gonna be just one more thing or if it really does innovate instruction and learning. and see if it's going to be just one more thing or if it really does innovate instruction and learning in a way that makes sense. Um Gemini did release a free version like a week ago to our domain. Um so there are going to be some A I features in Google Classroom in particular that every teacher sees. Uh and it looks pretty slick. Will it be one more thing or will it really innovate their practice? That's for the teachers to determine pretty soon. I'm going to show them the tools and and show them where to play. And and we'll have some good conversation over the next semester about um what ethical use looks like for adults, for kids. Um and I'm sure you'll see, maybe the next time I'll bring back like the charge for the committee and and how we're going to be framing the work and what we'll be looking at um long term. So that's uh in a nutshell, what I've been up to. Questions?
See you then. Thank you. Alright, moving on to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything from it?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Vote by Kathy, second by Carrie. Vote to approve the consent agenda.
Five V A's. Brian?
Hi.
Hi.
Six Y A's, zero N A's. Motion passes.
Can you move Brian's little thing over so I can see if he raises his? Yes, thank you. Thanks. Alright, moving on to new business. I get a motion to discuss item number one. Oh, skipped it. Dang it, I don't want to talk about that one. Alright, old business, board self-evaluation retreat. We have some issues with the date.
I'm gonna, I know you guys asked for me to be there. Uh that date I will be, I was going to be at the Conspex for Dennis Conference, Fairbanks. I didn't know if there was other possibility to do that.
Looking for me, it'd have to be like a weekday night, anytime in October beyond. Weekday nights.
Yeah, I think. So so will one night do it or do we need a series or should we start with one and figure out later?
I think one and figure it out would be a good place to start. I don't, never done this process, so it's something new to me too.
So are we talking September, trying to find September then? I don't know my schedule yet. In October, I can ask for things, but um I am going to be out of town starting on about the fourteenth or maybe a little bit before of October, so I'd like to have it before that.
I can do any. Weeknight in September, I think.
Thirty or Tuesday or?
Like, yeah, like a Monday, Tuesday.
You want to shoot for September thirtieth? Like six o'clock, Jason's office?
If we can shoot for six thirty, I have a late Tuesday.
Thirtieth. Everybody good? Brian's, Brian good?
We're we're shooting to try to get this in uh in September, not after sometime?
We're just shooting for sooner rather than later.
Okay, I will, all of those dates so far that were thrown out, I will be unavailable, so. Um I've got, I'm going hunting finally and then uh I've got State Fire Conference at the end of September.
Your third state, you're available.
Um second week of October is when I come back from my last trip of the fall.
Like the seventh?
I'll be back second week. Um I will tell you exactly. Hold on a second. Um I should be back, I'm back the eleventh.
True, second, third week.
And I leave about the eleventh. I mean, I can attend by Zoom if you if necessary.
What about the sixteenth of September?
I'll be gone, I'll be at Moose Camp.
Who else? Would you prefer the sixteenth of the?
Doesn't matter.
The sixteenth? Sixteenth to six thirty?
So Brian, are are you someplace on the thirtieth that you actually have a telephone?
Yeah, I'll I will have a telephone. I won't be available like for an all-day kind of a thing. I'll be in, I have uh training that I'm in. The thirtieth is Saturday.
It's Tuesday, it started at six.
I'd be available for for part of the day, yeah.
We're talking about evening.
Yeah, start at six thirty P M.
Yeah.
Alright, back to the thirty. Alright, and we'll adjust from there.
Yeah, I mean, I can call in for as much as I can, as much as I can get to. I'll be in Sitka, um which has sort of spotty, spotty cell service, but I'll be, that's where I'll be.
Alright, so the thirtieth at six thirty with Brian on the phone. And let's remember to let some.
The district office.
District office. They wanted the last. Alright, now we're on to new business. Can I get a motion on item number one?
Move to approve the six-year uh capital improvement plan.
Second.
I think that is six-year as opposed to six, right? Is that right, Jason?
Yeah, it's a six-year capital improvement plan. Um this allows us to get our projects on the state capital improvement uh list for reimbursement through the state. Um currently, the governor vetoed the money who they were going to, the legislature wasn't on the top nine. Um we do have one project that this year was sitting at number sixteen. Um the state will reevaluate those projects and score them out. Um and we could move up or down from that position. Um and we have a couple other projects as well. So um this is money that the city has kind of already expended, um but it helps refill their coppers and allows them to do other projects for the schools.
Kathy?
Do we need to uh amend this or can we just get you guys to amend it where we said, oh, we already did part of number eight as part of number four? Uh can we just authorize them to do the tweaks that we talked about at at the uh um work session? We'll tell the public that the work session, we basically said we'll do do the same thing um as what we said before.
We had cross originally with at the work session, we had cross out school administrative office areas.
Due to the fact that those projects are already being completed, there's no sense in leaving them on there. We can adjust that, um because the project order doesn't change um where the submit to the state and so your approval will keep the same order then.
And then for the public's point of view, we added something for two thousand thirty-two, right?
Yes, yes.
The six-year thing, so you gotta, you can submit the same one, but then get something else on the end, which is a possible covered play area at Herman Hutchins.
Yeah, yeah, and a lot of those ones that are year six are getting out there, so those projects can definitely change in the future. But um you you need to put out projects that that you hope to someday find financing for, but doesn't mean that they're guaranteed.
Any other board comment? Any public comments? Vote to approve item number one?
Five V A's.
Hi.
Six Y A's, zero N A's. Motion passes.
Got a motion, motion to approve item number two.
Move to approve the security camera R F P. Seven hundred and two thousand five hundred and thirty dollars.
I can, vote by Carrie, second by Scott. Um this, this was presented in the work session. Um the team, Dan, Bryant and Megan Gunderson and myself, I'm not going to lie, they did most of the work. Um went through a a long process, started last fall uh to submit bids. The numbers that we got in March were simply beyond the finances that we had available for the project. So we did some va- uh asked those companies that submitted bids to um submit for value engineering. Um and through that process, uh we received the final bids in July. Um they sat down and made their recommendation to me uh based upon this, the scoring rubrics that we had. Um and Articom uh met the needs of the district. Their um costs were the most appropriate for the job. Um we then looked at, because it was slightly more than what we had set aside for the job, we looked at how we could fund it with available resources. So um if this is approved, then we would um come back to the next meeting just to move that hundred and two thousand dollars from our A V project. Um and then they would then start that A V project. Although it's in the same fund, it's just I think it's clean that way. And so Articom is the vendor that we're recommending to do it. This would encompass all of the, it'd be all new cameras in all three buildings. Um as Megan had stated earlier, uh you can't really sacrifice um on the camera end because you're going to end up with blind spots or a product that's defeats the purpose of doing the product, project in the first place. Um the idea with the, where the servers would be, our recommendation is off premises. Um we saw the savings is twofold, one that was cheaper for the five-year licensing that comes with it and a warranty, um as well as it allows the district more flexibility with its labor. Um as we won't have to upkeep those systems, most all of our system, our um servers are off premises at this point anyway. So it's 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 just where things are going. Um we do feel uh good about being off premises because currently our um power school and stuff is is off off premises and I'd say that's probably more secure than some of our cameras are. So um we weren't able to, through the value engineering process, able to do all the doors that we initially wanted to. It doesn't mean that we're going to stop working on finding ways to do those in the future. It's just we looked at which areas, which doors could we do now um to increase um safety to the district and provide value moving forward. Um as we look for other funding sources, possibly a grant or something in the future or high school remodel, these are all pieces of um our goal to eventually have um all of our our doors modernized in the district.
I heard safety. Is there any other reasons we're doing this?
Safety.
And modernization.
Yeah, that modernization helps drive some of the efficiency. Um currently, if uh someone asks me to, you know, when I was at Advanced Principal, someone asked me to look at a camera and find something that find something that took thirty seconds. Um the new systems should allow for more efficiency to find those things. Um so if there are threats, um having the servers off premises also comes with its benefit because we can check into those things without having to be onsite necessarily. Um it allows us probably to better work with law enforcement as well. So um the vigil on system is similar to what the community is already using. Um and so um that allows us, one, from management situation is to ask questions for having issues with our system. On the flip side, also if, you know, law enforcement needs to access something, they're they're going to understand the system as well. Um in the case of of a a very negative, like a actor, shooter situation or something where it happened, we'd have those pieces ready to go. So current systems um have a significant number of blind spots in it. So I can tell you like, oh, something happened in this hallway, it better be in that bank of lockers because that bank of lockers doesn't have a camera on it. And that's kind of the way, unfortunately, a lot of our schools are. It was done with the best technology of that time. Um in ten years, um it's amazing how much things change. So um the ability to zoom in and 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 find things will be significantly different. Um especially, you know, we, it's not just inside the building, it's at the exterior of the building that um we receive. And sometimes the stuff on the exterior of the building, especially after hours, if we're being asked for it, it normally is of criminal nature or could aid in a criminal investigation sometimes. Unfortunately, but we are a public entity and we have a variety of people, not only our students, that use our premises.
I know you asked, we went over this in the work session, but are you asking us for new money or is this money coming?
I'm not asking you for new money. The money is coming from projects where we've already allocated uh funds for um during the last school year. The four hundred thousand of it was already, three hundred thousand was set aside for security cameras and another hundred thousand has already been set aside for doors. Um that, we moved that money last year to um a tech account where it was sitting um so we could complete the project. Um and the difference is, is that another project, our audiovisual project, had moved money as well, um which you guys approved last year, and that's just sitting in that's that same account. So within that account, you've got multiple projects waiting for completion. Um so our, you know, in all transparency is, we're asking for more than four hundred thousand, we're asking for five hundred and three thousand. That additional hundred and three would then come from um that audiovisual project, so we're not going to, we're not asking for more. Uh we do believe that, kind of looking back at the scope of that audiovisual project, that when we build that R F P, um we'll prioritize places like the high school gym. We don't want to have another graduation up there until we get that thing fixed up. So, you know, obviously, we can go through that list and we feel like there's, there's enough funding to do the highest priority areas uh to ensure our schools are represented and helped by.
Any other board questions? Kathy, anything? Any public comment? Seeing none, vote to approve item number two.
Hi.
Six Y A's, zero N A's. Motion passes.
Alright, and item number three is a discussion item. Where Kathy to lead us off?
So the A F B, um A S B uh has an annual conference in November uh through thirteenth through the sixteenth. And uh one of the things they do there officially on the last day, but there's a lot of prep work beforehand, is to um produce a document called Where We Stand. Um did everybody get that in their email? Um it's, it's um one hundred and sixty-nine pages long, so if you haven't read it yet, um you know, think of several days to do that, but it's very useful to have that so that uh if the legislature comes up, comes up with something, the A S B can say, we know what the membership thinks about that and we can speak uh officially on that subject. So sometimes there are all kinds of um controversial things. Should the, do we think that the uh school age should be six, uh seven to sixteen, or do we think it should be six to eighteen? Uh was one of the controversial ones one time. This particular year, it doesn't look like there's very much controversial yet, but if if there's anything we think should be changed or put in there, we should um try to uh get our resolution in by October fifteenth. All the other districts are going to be doing the same thing and then they will get it back to us. The A S B will get it back to us by October twenty-fifth. In which case, we can comment on those and say, oh, that's a great idea or the, the, no, don't do that. Um and tell our delegates to the uh annual conference uh what they should do about that. Uh and or we can put in uh written um commentary that'll go to the committee. So I would hope that people would read all one hundred and sixty-nine pages of that and make their comments. And um I would suggest that we um propose anything that we're interested in by September twenty-second because that would give us time to approve it on October thirteenth. And then uh I also hope we put on our agenda for October twenty-seventh uh time to respond and authorize our representatives to, you know, go for, we really think that school should only be for eight-year-olds or whatever it is that uh if there's anything we want to say, we need to have time on the twenty-seventh. Um I will also say that there is a um, for people who don't like reading and just want the the um, the bottom line, um there is going to be a conference on the, an online conference on, was it the twenty-seventh? I'm sorry, I didn't write that down. Um is it on there? Um anyway, there is a, they're having a. Um, anyway, there is a, they're having a. A um. Online thing on a week, weekday. Keep going, one more time, one, one more, there we go, okay, August twenty-seventh at noon. Um, any, anybody, including the public, can go to that, you have to register ahead of time, so they'll get you on their teams meeting, but um. Uh, the Reader's Digest version is available. It can sound really um, really boring, and it is extremely long and complicated, but. Um, there have been times when the legislature, for instance, wanted to put everybody into boroughs, and other people stood up for us and said, no, don't do that. Um, there have been times when they, we, as a, as a group of ASB. Said this is what would be reasonable um in terms of uh. You know, how much more it costs to run a small district than a big district, and Anchorage was on board, and so this is the way that we, we um. Figure out how to, how we work together as the Alaska School Board Association. Questions, comments? Anything that is, people think is pressing that should, should be in there? This is mainly a heads up. I think by September twenty-second, if we're going to propose anything, we should have it to the point that we can. You know, almost vote on it, and then we can vote on it on the thirteenth, because we kind of need to have two readings. So if anybody's interested in. Um, doing that, I have served on the, on the committee that works on the Thursday several times. Um, you're supposed to send your school board president, but Joe always let me go instead, because he, he didn't want to, but, but it's a, it's an interesting process, and. So there's kind of some wordsmithing that goes on on the Thursday, they go through everything. Different tables of people and and uh, so if there's things that we want to say, make sure that our delegate. Goes and talks to those people. You can put things in from the floor on Sunday, but it is way easier to do it. Through this process than to wait till the last minute.
Any other comments, questions? Yeah? Anybody? Alright, thank you, Kelly. We're moving on. Comments from the board, Kara?
Um, I'm excited about the cellphone-free PSA information that's going out. I've been encouraging everybody to read that and get informed. Um, new books arriving always makes me excited to hear, and I was really glad to hear that chalk is being sunsetted. I know that staff feedback wasn't positive, so well done to the admin team for listening to that staff feedback. Congratulations to Amber and to Cheryl, huzzah on your audit, that is excellent news, and I think this is like many, many years in the running of like. Nothing but positive feedback, so well done, you two. Um. I know that I am uh just. Repetition, 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 but yes, on the override, so exciting. Um, now we just have to keep on contacting the state school board, they're on the deed website, just Google state school board, and all of their emails pop up. And the run-up to the first day of school is always busy for the grownups, and I am so glad and proud of all the hard work that everybody is doing. Let us know if there's anything that we can help on.
Um, when we're thinking of different um work sessions, I would really like to have one on the. ELOP program, Gifted and Talented Program. At some point, we were kind of waiting for the curriculum to get aligned, and I think it's cool that we've kind of. Have a chance to catch our breath and start over again on the curriculum um this year. Thank you, Mr. Berkeley, and maybe this is also the time to, to think about. Being sure the kids are all being challenged.
Scott?
Um, I don't have much tonight. Um, I would just like to echo, um. I know our facilities crew doesn't get a lot of props, but I know they do a lot of work in the summertime, in a very short turnaround, trying to get our schools. Uh, fixed up and propped up for next school year, so thanks for all the work you do behind the scenes and. Um, looking forward to school starting here in the next couple of weeks.
Kara?
Couple of things, um, I just wanted to thank Dan, he let our girls' basketball team use the bus barn to make our float for Goldrus Days, which we won, by the way. So, thank you. Um, a couple of other things, football starts off this weekend, so if you're home, please come support them at noon. Um, and also Cross Country has a fun run and bake sale on Saturday morning, so if you feel like going for a jog. Um. Please come support them. Also, I just wanted to say, um. Where we're at this year, this is the first time I, I think I got on school board. Right in the middle of COVID. And. And looking back at where we were last year and where we have always been, it seems like in the fall. It feels really good to be doing the things that we're doing and having the discussions that we're having. Um, so I just want to shout out to the admin team and to Jason, um, where we're at, this, this is good stuff. Um, so thank you.
Ryan?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Um, also, kudos to the maintenance team. I was driving by um. The high school, middle school today, returning from an ambulance call and. Noticed the parking lot there, GMS, looks like it's getting ready to have some pavement in that spot that has been. Pretty rough for the last few years, um, so that's was cool to see. Uh, I'm gonna echo Carrie, uh, in the, in the short time that I've been on the school board, this feels the most. Um, refreshing and ready that we've have all felt, I think, in a little while. Um, I'm excited for the school year, the energy seems great, I was, I'm really um happy to see all of these social media posts on our new teachers. Going out there and all the engagement with the community um with those posts, so that was really cool to see. Um, and then also just want to do a plug for National Honor Society and Beta Club. This Friday, they are going to be helping serve at steak night at the Elks. Um, so they'll be doing their uh serving up steaks, and some of the proceeds, like all these other ones, will be going to uh assist National Honor Society and Beta Club. To further their efforts. So, uh, that's all I have.
I'll just say, it seemed like all you guys were ready to go to back to work, or not that you haven't been working, but like there was so much talking by the admin tonight. You guys were really chatty. Um, alright, just for information items, board meeting schedule is on there. Uh, we need volunteers for the teacher in service, and I think that was breakfast, is that correct?
We take.
There are two, we had two different ones.
Take people for breakfast on Wednesday morning, seven thirty to eight. Um, and then I'd love to introduce anybody who's there for that to the whole staff. And then on Friday, uh, lunch, I believe, is at noon at HHES, and we're gonna do a barbecue for the staff. The admin team, we're gonna put for the staff. Love to have you there, just even if it's just chit chat and see everybody when it's started this year. Um, there's more, just gonna have some fun, socialize.
That was breakfast this Wednesday?
Next one.
Next Wednesday.
And then the twenty-second for lunch.
In one of them, you needed us to do something.
The breakfast is servings, uh, you get to work on, on the twentieth. Uh, which also gets a, and I'll bring you up front and introduce you, and thank you. Um, and then on the twenty-second, uh, you know, I think the admin team, we're planning on serving, but we'd love to have as many of you there as we can get there. Um, just to socialize with the staff, but that will be at noon. The hamburgers and hot dogs, whatever else.
Alright, next on there is ASB September conferences. And then future meeting dates, uh, next policy review, and Brian, you were asking to do it telephonically for that one as well on the eighteenth?
Uh, yes, if possible. In fact, I may be, uh, yeah, that's my plan for right now.
Then August nineteenth, uh, new teacher orientation, and August twenty-fifth is our next work session and regular session. And meetings adjourned.